I'd like to call this March 15th meeting of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District School Committee's order. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening, and I would like to ask you to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'll have introduction of our members, and we'll start on this side tonight.
Diane Robyn, Blackstone.
Tammy Lemieux, Blackstone.
Jane Reggio, Millville.
Karen Vernon, Millville.
Sarah Williams, Blackstone.
Alan Himmelberger, Superintendent.
Wen Cobb, Business Manager.
Well, welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us. As you know, tonight is our public hearing on our budget proposal for the upcoming FY19 year, and we will get to that. But first, we have warrants, payroll, field trips, and minutes of the February 8th meeting. I'll entertain a motion to move consent agenda A.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Diane, seconded by Tammy. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, all the ayes. Okay, all right.
Jane.
Oh, thank you. We'll tell you about our budget needs.
Can you wait me to start?
Yeah, sure.
I'm going to use the podium. Good evening. Thank you all for being here, and welcome to the public hearing of our FY19 school budget. I want to say thank you to two groups that have been working a lot of hours since November. The leadership team, and most of them are here this evening, have really spent a tremendous amount of time on the analysis and the needs in trying to get to a number that is workable for us to run next year. And that process has started in November, and it has gone December, January, into February. And the other group, obviously, is our school committee that has worked and logged an awful lot of hours since December, along with running a superintendent search simultaneously, and along with many, many budget meetings and workshops. So, thank you for your work on this. So, as we can see, we're going to have a budget narrative. We'll define the increase because, it's funny, the number never seems to go down. The costs continue, and as you will see, our issues this year, more than ever, are our lack of offsets and revenues. We have issues and concerns, and then we will look at the calendar as we move forward. So FY19, for us and for many districts, especially small regional districts, will be a very challenging cycle. We are trying to match our revenues with our expenditures, and, as I mentioned, to our offsets that we customarily get, whether they be federal grants, whether they be transportation reimbursement on Chapter 71, or circuit breaker. We simply don't have them. The other offset that we traditionally use is our excess and deficiency account, which is the school committee's, the school district's stabilization account. We simply don't have any money left in that after averaging $340,000 of offsets to the budget over the last six years. We also have many additional state and federal laws with no additional funding, especially around special ed with our social, emotional, and behavioral students, and around ESL and ELL. The district's piece of the town's educational pie is shrinking. Norfolk Agricultural, and that's certainly political commentary for later, but that law needs to be changed because it is a tremendous drain on both towns' educational budgets. And school choice, our net school choice out is about $300,000. This reduces our funding, and as parents, choose other educational options. We have lost staff and programs, as you will hear, over the past eight years, and we need an infusion of funding to make BMR the choice it was for all of us a decade or so ago. Our high school boys' basketball team had a pretty nice season, and Mr. Ducharme and Mr. Dudek are, were simply amazed by the support that both towns gave this team. We had alumni, returning parents of students and alumni. Both towns came out to support this outstanding team. And Mr. Ducharme, who has been here for a few years, said that it was like the old days. And that was 2006, I believe, was the last time the basketball team had to run into the tournament like this. And so, it's amazing how we can coalesce around a winning team, and yet we have so many other things that get in our way of how we decide to spend our money. We know that we will have tremendous needs around curriculum, the new science standards that went into effect this year with K-8. We also know that the history and social studies standards will probably be adopted this June for next year, a year out. And we are facing a new computer science initiative that the private sector and business has been pushing the Department of Ed and the school districts to start to fund computer science and all that goes with it. For the last several years, the number-one career for undergrads in terms of salary was mechanical and electrical engineering. Those were the highest-paying jobs as you graduated college. Last year, those were finally beaten out by computer science, specifically coding, which took the top honors for the most highest-paid field undergraduates could graduate into. So we know that that initiative is not going away, and all of these will cost more money. Around technology, the school committee is to be commended for taking a stand two years ago, and I know our tech director, Mr. Bozan, is quite happy that we decided to take a stand and fund the technology initiative so that now every student at the high school has a device that they can carry with them. Next year, every test in every grade will be computer-based testing. That will require bandwidth, devices, and lots of training. This computer science initiative, which may be rolled out in 2019, it's going to require the department to set licensing and certifications. It's going to require districts to find people to teach. But that is where we are moving. Nobody says we have plenty of technology we don't need anymore. We all are now quite comfortable with the next app that we install on our phones. That has to come from somewhere. And those algorithms are out there, and we have pretty talented people writing the code for that. Our student services needs continue to escalate as our students continue to need support. And this is every student. When I sat in on the AP English presentations, every one of the students said how stressed and anxious they were about dealing with everything that they have to deal with. It's not made up. It's not something that can be willed away. These are very real situations that all of our students face. The English-language learners require more teachers, more instruction, testing, and translations. There's no money for these anywhere in the foundation budget. And yet, Department of Ed, in 2016, put forth all of their new regulations. The social, emotional, and behavioral needs of all of our students continues to be a labor of love because every one of our students deserves the very best we can give them. We don't interview and pick and choose who we take. We accept every student who lives in our towns and those who choice in from other districts. Our student population requires far more supports, both in their behavior as well as their academics. And these are all driving our budget increases. We have an increase that sounds rather large. As a matter of fact, it is, 7.5 percent, $1,680,557, which Mrs. Cobb has already memorized. That's a lot of money. It's what we need to move forward. We have some new staff for $199,000. We have curriculum needs. We have technology needs. We have a slight increase in transportation. We have additional special ed tuitions. We have facilities and maintenance. That number could have two more zeros in it. Our buildings are crumbling. We finally have the John F. Kennedy Project started with our OPMs, our project managers, this week, and we look forward to getting that project up and running. We have contractual obligations that were collectively bargained to the tune of $593,000. We are missing a total of $285,000 in offsets that we just don't have anymore. We have a small amount to support our library programs, and we had an FY18 reductions that we need to move forward to cover. Insurance, retirements, and benefits, $190,000. A lot of people think that we can just lay off staff, and that's the end of it. But it's not in a regional district because we manage and own the unemployment and the workers' comp. So that is something that we have to control and factor in to our discussions. These are big numbers. But the reality is, regional financing, and I hope everyone gets a chance to read it, the timing of this publication could not be more important. This is a study by the Office of the State Auditor on updating the structure and finance of Massachusetts Regional School Districts. And as I said, based upon per pupil, both enrollment and what we spend, we're 56th out of 58 school districts in our per pupil expenditures. It's all here, the good and the bad, and the hard to read and the hard to understand. But it's worth taking the time to read it. It's also up on our website. So in terms of new staff, we are looking at increasing one of our tech support positions to full-time and to add another tech support person. With 2,400 or so devices, it takes an awful lot of people to manage those. And as I said, technology is not going away. Nobody gets to college and says, hey, you know what? I have everything I need. The technology, the use of the technology, the understanding of technology only continues to increase, year after year, and as our students move through the grades. So 50,000 is to cover the 1.3 additional FTEs, full-time equivalents. We need a counselor at the high school, but a dual-certified counselor that can manage both the behaviors, the adjustment, the counseling, and the guidance. That's a dual certification. We have the need for another special ed teacher at the middle school. And in order to more efficiently schedule, Millville Elementary needs to increase a PE teacher's position by .4, and Kennedy and Maloney's library professional position also by .4. That's $199,000. Again, depending upon who we hire, that number can increase or decrease. But these are projections. This page is a little hard to read, and I have copies in the office. I'll see if I can get them to the libraries as well. But this is a look back to FY14. It includes 15, 16, 17, and 18. And I know that people are just used to looking at the supplemental increase, but that's only a very small part, a very narrow take on an entire school budget, which is very messy, which is very hard to understand, and is very easy to challenge from those who do not live and work and breathe education. But these assessments have risen dramatically. And when I talk to the town boards, they say, when they look back, they say, this cannot be sustained. How can we possibly cover this? It's a fair question. But for now, we're focused on our need, and this is what the district needs. So, the Blackstone assessment increases by just about $2 million in supplement. Millville, about $750,000. The total Blackstone assessment is $9,663,000. The total Millville assessment, $333,000. These are big numbers, and they're hard to digest, easy to poke holes at, and even easier to run away from. But it's not fair for our students. It's not what we should be giving our students. People paid for our education as we went through. And that's our mission. That's our charge. That's what we do in our society. We need to support the children and the students that are coming through now. And their world is far more complex than ours was, and it certainly has exponentially become more difficult for most of our students in the last 10 years. And can you point to social media? Perhaps. Can you point to stress and strain and wear and tear on families? Perhaps. Can you point to an overall breakdown in our societal norms? Perhaps. I mean, when the president can fire the number-three person in the country on Twitter, I think that's a breakdown in how we should be performing. And it's symptomatic across every single organization, whether it's local government, state government, churches. It doesn't matter, public education, private education. There is a breakdown, and we need to repair and move forward stronger. Because if we don't, then, as I have heard, then Blackstone Valley Tech may become the school of choice. The only problem is, there's a 1,200-student limit there. So not all of our children can aspire to go to Blackstone Valley Tech. And we would argue that for most of our students, the education at BMR is damn fine with every opportunity, with every offering, with staff who go over and over and over again the extra mile for kids. And so, the effort and the dedication and the professionalism of staff is not the question. The effort, the dedication, the professionalism, the level of education we want as adults, as taxpayers, as voters, is what is truly what we need to look at. Again, Chapter 70, which is our primary funding formula from the state, primary funding opportunity from the state, is flat. They call it holding us harmless. I call it evading the state's obligation to fully fund public education. And they've done it with the foundation budget. They've done it with Chapter 71 and regional transportation. They've done it with special ed through circuit breaker reimbursement, over and over and over again. 300 districts get the same amount of increase as 26 regional vocational high schools. Are you kidding me? Governor Baker, you do a lot of things well. That's one you don't do well. And the great and general court, which has turned a deaf ear to most of us, also needs to figure that out. Because it's not right, it's not fair, and at what point do you say, we're not going to support educating our students? And I know, and I've said this before, it's far more a state and federal problem than it is a local problem. We've seen the percentage of support shift from the state and the federal government to the backs of local taxpayers and property values. We saw that in 2007. That was exactly what the state wanted to do, shift the burden to local. And their increase is minimal, and the towns' shares have been huge. I could go on, but I don't want to keep everyone here till 11:00. So we have issues and concerns. We know we have our curriculum concerns around science standards, history and social studies, which will, I am sure, pass and be voted in in June, and our computer science, which who knows where that could be. We don't know how big or small that will look like. We know we have to continue to maintain and support our infrastructure because next year, we have to test everybody on a computer-based testing assessment. We have building needs, as I'm sure everyone read in the call. We have a fire panel at the high school that needs repair, replacement, updating. Every 50 years or so, we've got to do something with our schools. So we have submitted both Millville Elementary and AF Maloney for accelerated repair projects. Kennedy was approved, and that is now starting. And we will be submitting the high school as a core renovation project once again in a few weeks. We know that our special education costs, our health insurance continues to be like buying a used car. Our English-language learner costs around translation continue to grow. I know I speak for Mrs. Cobb. Anybody who is listening, who wants to come in and go through the budget, who wants to ask questions, we are happy to take you through. We're happy to show what we have, and we're happy to show what we do every day to manage a budget that is a challenge. So I hate to borrow this line, but somebody seemed to use it a lot to success. Do we make BMR great again or continue to allow the erosion of programs and services? So where do we go? We know that next Thursday, March 22nd, 7:00, is the adoption of the school budget. We know that between the 26th of March and the 27th of April, we will be meeting with our town boards, finance committees, boards of selectmen. We know that Millville has a special town meeting on April 30th to discuss an override. We know that Millville's annual town meeting is May 14th, and we know that Blackstone's annual town meeting is May 29th. June 7th is the target date for the school committee to certify the FY19 budget. I cannot stress how important it is to get a budget so we don't have to go through what we went through two years ago without a budget on July 1st, so that we can have a number to manage and to plan and to work through. I would be happy to answer any questions, or Mrs. Cobb certainly can. And as I said, to anyone watching, please feel free to send us an email, to call us. We'd be happy to sit with you and go through anything and everything that we have, from revolving account balances to line-by-line budget details, to where we're saving money, to where the hidden costs are. And again, we're happy to do that. So I'm going to return, I think, to my chair, but I thank you for your attention. I know that this is, it's a lot of work to digest this. It's a tremendous challenge to try and match revenues with what we're asking for. But this, I believe, is a fair and honest, as a presentation as you can get, to what the needs are for us as we move forward. Thank you very much.
As this is a public hearing, at this point, I will open up the floor to anyone who would like to comment, react, support the proposal that you've seen before you. I will tell you that we have been working on this process as a school committee with Wen and Mr. Himmelberger since, well, since last year's town meetings. And we know that this process has been contentious. We know that just the way that regional school systems are set up in developing their own budgets and not through a town finance committee or a mayor, that's set up to be that way, unfortunately. And we have tried to do things a little bit differently this year. We tried to project what the needs would be, and Mr. Himmelberger produced a three-year strategic finance plan. Unfortunately, I think people referred to the chart within the plan and not the wording within the plan, and had expectations that we were going in a different direction, not based on need. We've had very, very lengthy meetings with the leadership team. We have had budget presentation in the high school. We have not met with either town, other than kind of aside conversations. We know that we need to do that, and we need to do that as we go through the process. And unfortunately, we should have been doing that all along, but that's not easy to do sometimes because I think our communities have a tendency to see our schools as a separate entity. And we are, as I'm going to steal from Sarah, two towns, one district. And we need to pull, we need to support the 2,000 people that are in this And we need to pull, we need to support the 2,000 people that are in this district every day, our teachers, our students, and support them. And so, the committee went back and forth. We had several budget workshops. We wondered if we should bring this amount down to an amount feasible for the towns to manage. We knew that Millville was attempting to reset its own finances this year. And we made a conscious effort to say it was time to reset ours, to really ask for what our needs are, to support the people who do this every day, what they need to do their jobs better, and to ask the individual townspeople who live in these communities to support the schools that are in these communities. Because it's not simply for the children that are in the schools now, but it's for their children that will come along later, and their ability to support their own families as they develop their path for the future. And we are public schools, open to everyone. And regardless of what you believe about a public school, they have a great history in the United States, and they need to have a great future. And they only have a great future if every single person, whether you're a retiree, or whether you're a family just starting, without any children yet, are willing to support that. And so, we will do our best to make sure everybody understands that. We ask everybody to ask any of us any questions. But we are asking people to come out and support what these schools need. Because it is time, it's long overdue, we need to reset as well. And unfortunately, given the state and federal and what is no longer available to us, but mandated that we do, it falls to the backs of everybody who pays taxes in these communities. So I hope that in the April 30th meeting in Millville and both the town meetings in May, that people will come out and try to understand what we're asking for, try to understand why we're asking for it. I'm sure any of the leadership people here will be glad to give their passionate plea about what they need in their schools to make their schools places where students can truly learn to be citizens of the United States of America. And we need people who will be our next doctors, and be our next lawyers, and be our next caretakers. Because I know somebody got to take care of me come soon. But we need that, and we only get that if we have everybody helping us do it. So we get that these numbers are large, we get that they're a tremendous commitment. But as a committee, we felt the time was now to ask for that of our towns. So that's why you're seeing that here today.
Hi, good evening. My name's Bethany Dunton, and I live on Mendon Street in Blackstone. I support you, and I am also an educator. So I have seen what has happened to districts who don't support their school systems. Property values decrease, students leave the district. It's just so hard to recover from a deteriorating school system. We need to make sure that our school system is the flagship of our two towns. And it's vital to the health and the success of our towns. If we want people to move into this town and take pride in the town, it starts with the school system. So I just want to say I do support it as a parent and as a taxpayer. And, you know, thank you for the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
One of the things that I would urge people that are listening, and for people who, you know, look over this budget, is to see beyond the number. I think that so often, we get caught up on a number, and we don't look at what that number supports. So I've been now on the school committee about a year. And often, the meetings with the towns are, what's your plan, what's your plan, what's your plan? So this year, when I look at our school district plan for 2017, 2018, and then I compare it to the staff list that we have, which I'm sure will be, you know, one of the first lines of why are we hiring when we have this budget constraint? The tech support supports our district goal number three. The high school counselor supports district goal number four. The middle school special education teacher supports district goal number two. The M E S P E teacher in the JFK slash AFM library paraprofessional support the appropriate use of the reading specialist district-wide, which goes to the very core of why we're here and why we try to teach. So while the numbers, I can appreciate that the numbers are large, please, you know, Allen and Ms. Cobb have offered to meet with people, please go and find out what the number represents and why it's there. And I'm sure all of our leadership team would be willing to support what, you know, watch last time's meeting to see why we've asked for these additional supports. But dig deeper than just a number, because the number gets so many people angry. But as I see it, I see all the kids I meet when I'm out there in the community, and that's where I see my dollar signs above their head. Like, that's going to get them into the college they want, that's going to get them successfully through their journey through middle school, which is always fun in itself. You know, we're trying to get a budget to support the plans that you have asked us to develop. And each school has a plan, and we're trying to support that. So I urge you to dig a little deeper than the number and figure out, through all of the resources we have here, to support the budget for our kids, because that's what it's all about.
Anyone else? No, just right there.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So for those of you who don't know me, my name's Loretta Bradenman. I'm the Director of Student Services for the district. And many of you may have seen me in my car. I drive a 2005 GMC Envoy. It keeps me safe, and it gets me to where I need to be. It doesn't have a lot of bells, it doesn't have a lot of whistles, but from time to time, it breaks down, needs some repairs. In many ways, this district is very much like my 2005 GMC. Up until this point, the district has been able to keep our students safe and get our kids to where they need to be. But in 2019, every student is entitled by law to a free and an appropriate education. It's called FAP. The problem is, FAP is not free. FAP is very expensive. If we want to continue to move in the right direction, keep our children safe, and get them to where they need to go, we need to support the proposed budget. Otherwise, I fear that in a very short amount of time, the district will be at a Level 3, and our students will not be able to access the hopes and dreams that they have aspired to and get into the schools and colleges and careers that they had hoped for and that they deserve. If anyone has any questions regarding the special education budget, I call it as I see it. I'm very straightforward, what you see is what you get. The special education budget is a very large piece of this proposal. Every dollar is attached to children. Your neighbors, your children, grandchildren. My office is always open. I welcome an email, an office visit, or even a telephone conversation. I work with special education parents on both sides of the district. If nothing else, I've earned your trust. I will tell you if I feel as though something is overinflated. But just like my old GMC, in this budget, there are no whistles, there are no bells, there is no fluff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Braverman. Anyone else? Okay, well, we will continue to work hard going forward and ask anyone and everyone's support throughout this process. So thank you for listening to us, and I thank you in advance for helping to move this forward. Any other public forum, any other topics people would like to address? Mr. Himmelberger?
Thank you very much to the leadership team, appreciate you coming out tonight. Just two items on my report. The first one is a consideration of the early retirement incentive for Unit A members. We have done this in each of the previous two years. And what it allows us to do is to entice someone to retire at a high salary and replace them with a lower salary. And that gives a positive impact to the budget. The motion before you would be to offer the early retirement incentive of $7,500 if they retire effective June 30th, 2018. All members, even those who have already declared a future retirement date, are eligible. Members must declare to me by May 1st, 2018. The full amount is taxable, but not pensionable, and will be paid by July 31st, 2018. And for anyone who has already received a first or first and second year of the retirement incentive, that would simply be reduced accordingly. So I would certainly urge the committee to give this consideration this evening, as I feel that it will help mitigate some of our gaps in our budget. Thank you.
Will entertain a motion to move the early retirement incentive for Unit A employees?
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
I think when this came up a couple of weeks ago, we asked where the money would come from. Did we get a final answer on that?
Next year.
Out of next year's budget?
Which is why it's being paid by July.
July 31st.
Of 31st of 2018. So it will be paid from FY19, but that's where the budget savings will occur as well.
From the budgets of the salary saving.
Thank you.
Anyone want to propose that motion?
Make a motion to accept or to...
Offer.
Offer, thank you. The early retirement incentive to Unit A members.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Diane, seconded by Sarah, any discussion? All those in favor signify aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we will do that.
Thank you very much. The other item that I have, if you recall, back in the fall, we had that our Washington DC trip. And Mrs. Kurt was very new to us and is now, I believe, sent everybody information on the DC trip that is taking place June 10th through 13th. The trip was approved at that earlier meeting with the caveat to find out who was leading the trip and to make sure that the appropriate information around that was forthcoming for all parents. And I know that Kathy Finnegan is the staff member who was leading the trip. And I know that she led the parent meeting last week. And all questions seemed to be answered for the parents. And Mrs. Kurt is here, if there's any further questions. But I just wanted to make sure that that is the follow-up on that trip for DC.
As has been the past, Mrs. Finnegan will be the contact for the parents, have a cellphone with her on the trip. So does anybody have any other questions? Then I will entertain a motion to give final approval to the Washington DC trip.
So moved.
Moved by Diane, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Karen, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, you're all set.
Thank you very much. And that ends my report. I know that the next several weeks will be busy for all of us as we move through this budget process. But again, I can't thank the committee and the leadership team enough for their work so far. And I look forward to the process, thank you.
School committee forum, there were no students here today. They are having their battle of the bands, and I hope they're having a lot of fun. I know Mr. Himmelberger was going to sing until we had to reschedule this meeting. So I think they're thankful that we rescheduled the meeting. He could sing for us if he'd like. And I did go to the boys' basketball game, and it was very exciting. And I didn't realize we had such a tall person in our district. But he was something to watch, and it was very exciting. I think it's probably the first time in thirty years I've been to a high school basketball game. And I need to go to more. It was a lot of... Yes, I know, I go to college, I do the college thing. I like the college thing. But now, I'm going to enjoy the high school stuff. Anyway, Diane, you got any?
No, not really, nothing today. Thank you to the leadership team for all the effort put in on the budget. And actually, Mrs. Regia? And just for what you said, I think you set the right tone, and I really appreciated that.
And that's it, Jamie?
I just want to say I enjoyed both the girls' and boys' basketball runs. And I probably spent about $300 for my family to go to all of these games. And the concession stand I supported in every building we went to, and it was a great time. I also just wanted to let parents know that I have asked Mr. Himmelberger about adjusting some end-of-quarter dates in the district or trimester, whatever we do at the elementary level, I'm not sure anymore, to address concerns by the fact that we've now had six snow days. And the student mindset is, snow days don't matter, we're not going to learn anything, we're going to watch movies for six hours, so Mom let me stay home from school. So I have asked if we could adjust some dates so that exams and things happen later and that these snow days aren't lost learning hours. So that was a concern that...
I think that's being addressed.
Yes.
Sarah?
I would just like to thank the leadership team. I've been pestering them and Ms. Cobb and Mr. Himmelberger over the past week and a half with multiple emails, probably at midnight. Thank you for getting back to me. There will be more information coming out on our budget and just...
Keep an eye out.
Keep an eye out. We'll send the information, and just thanks.
Karen?
I am just going to let people know that we would like to thank, Millville Elementary School would like to thank, the cultural council. They provided us with a grant, and tomorrow, we're having the whole school see the Brain Show. It's a fun game, they're bringing in a full game show set, and the kids do trivia, and it aligns with standards. And the cultural council was gracious enough to support this for us. So they will be there tomorrow, and it'll be up on the internet. We'll be sending some pictures showing what's happening, but it's going to be a fun day, so.
Oh, and in addition to basketball, I did go to Millville Elementary School, and I was the Plinko czar.
You were in charge of Plinko, you rocked it.
If anybody would like to learn how to play Plinko?
Or if anybody would like a Plinko board?
Or if you would like a Plinko board, you can please take it away.
Or a giant Connect Four, we have lots of that.
We had fun there as well.
Okay, anybody, anything else? All right, we are going to... Yep, of course you can. Yes, of course.
He doesn't have any papers today, it's not going to be nearly as fun.
Good evening, guys. So this wasn't planned for me to come up, but I just wanted to share a few thoughts that the school committee mentioned. So in my mind, our school is our community, and our community is our school. And just celebrating some of the highlights that we've talked about. We've talked about some basketball on the boys' and girls' side. We've talked about music programs, we've talked about art. And I just wanted to share just a personal story with you. So our boys' basketball team made it to the districts. They played at home, won a few games against some neighboring districts, then went on to Clark, which they made for the first time in quite some time, which is a university, it's a college. They see a college campus, they get a better or a different feel, perspective of what that looks like. Then they moved on to WPI and played Sutton in the... Then they moved on to WPI and played Sutton in the finals. So it's the first time in three, it's a, it's a third time in school history that they made district finals. And what, what to me, that was most influential or key in all of this is that our students got out of the community and saw what was out there in the real world. And I will tell you that we had some students, male students, who did not think about anything outside of Blackstone-Millville, did not think about what they were doing outside of graduation, think about college. We had some college recruiters that came out and spoke with a young man who said, I don't even know if I want to go out and check out the school, and we convinced him to go to two college campuses to see what that's all about. He took the SATs and is looking at his future differently. And if we cut programs, we don't have our bands showing up to national conferences or national competitions, they're not going to local college events, our basketball teams are not showing up to college campuses, our art programs are not having art expos at RISD. That to me is, is essential. A lot of our students don't know what's out there in the real world. And when we think about extracurriculars, I mean, we're talking about curriculum, we're talking about technology, and we could talk about technology all day in terms of opening up the eyes of our students about what's out there. But to me, when I just, when I heard basketball and showing up and being on college campuses or showing up to high school games, they were on college campuses, and that really meant a lot to me, because you, you hear me preach, they were looking to support our students, and we want them to be college and career-ready, and career means additional education. It doesn't have to be college, but we're looking at certification programs, licensure programs, and I need students to realize that they have more out there than many of them feel when they're walking in the hallways of elementary, middle, and high school. And that happened this year with the success and the support of the community, our alumni, our coaches, and our staff. And that to me is what is essential. I need our kids to realize that there is more out there. And if we cut our budget, those opportunities won't be there. And that young man is looking forward to graduation, and who knows what else? And right now, he's looking at something that's a little different, and there's a door open, and he's going to test it out, and he will make a decision that's informed, and that's what we could ask for. So I just, I just wanted to share that, because I think there is a lot of great things happening, and we just want doors open. And we can't do that by cutting our budget. And anything that we cut is going to make a significant impact on our kids and our future. So I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And our PBS program too, let's not us, let's not forget. Our next meeting is scheduled for March 22nd, that's next week, and we will be, I will entertain a motion to go into a very short executive session to discuss non-union personnel and not to return.
So moved.
Moved by Diane. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, Sarah?
Yes.
Karen, yes, Jane, yes, Tammy?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Thank you very much.